I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and on behalf of the Town Council, we'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We'll begin by asking the council if there's any changes to the agenda.
No, sir.
No changes, and we'll move over to council comments. First on the list tonight is Council of Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of completely unprepared, it was my turn to go first. So, I just wanted to let folks know that at last weekend's policy committee meeting, the resolution that we approved at the prior meeting, at our meeting, about the Municipal Battery Commission has moved forward to be looked at by league staffs, and it's going to be made a bit more generalized, like most of our resolutions are, because we want to kind of keep some of that information about how we would like it to change, kind of in our back pocket for negotiation tactics with the legislature, but we do know that that will not be part of the upcoming legislature, so that we will be presenting it in its revised form at the Resolutions Committee. And then again, it will come before the delegates at the convention for a vote. So, they were really pleased with that. I know, Mayor, you were in the same policy committee that I was in, so they were very pleased with the fact that Silver City actually brought that forward as something that needed to be dealt with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Connel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have just a couple of, actually, fundings. The first one is that since I was in Albuquerque for Policy Committee for Municipalities again, I also took some time to spend some time training for our senior Olympians who are participating, and are still participating in the National Games in Albuquerque. And so far, we have a few pretty big winners. The softball team, at last we heard, was battling for silver, so that means, you know, they'll be either second or third in the whole country. I can tell you that the people that won gold, the team that won gold in the '70s division, are semi-pro teams, so, I don't know, that's kind of not fair. So, the way I see it is, we were doing even better than that, than the silver. And also, in horseshoes, in the, I think it's the '70s, '75, but it might be '75 to '79, our third place in the whole country was Fidel Quintana, who is from Silver City. And fourth place, he actually beat the person he beats for all the senior games here, and that's Preston Harper, who's also from Bryan County. So, that's pretty exciting. New Mexico is, I believe, in third for medal, a number of medals right now, and they still have a week to go. The next thing is that the committee that is working on the District Four Territorial Charter Day event is, has been meeting, or has met, and I just have to say, I have to give it to the Silver City Police Department, because they have stepped up in a major way. And I really appreciate Chief Portillo, and Code Enforcement Officer Howdy, and Officer Lopez, who are the three that are working with this committee, along with Mr. Marshall, and Mr. Staley, and Chief Lambert. Instead of just having national night out, we've decided to make it a little bit more fun and a little bit more interesting, and the Silver City Police Department has decided to challenge some of their fellow law enforcement and first responders to a battle of the badges, which is going to be a friendly dodgeball tournament. I think the community's really going to enjoy watching that. It will be held at Golf Park. There will be some celebrity judges, or celebrity referees that will be in town to help with that, and there will be a prize to the agency that wins. So, look forward to that. It'll be on Saturday, August 3rd, and it'll be from 4:00 to 10:00 at Golf Park, and there will be food available, and booths for kids, and all kinds of fun stuff. And then the last thing is, this morning, I met with several other community members along, at Western Ex University, with Lieutenant Governor Morales. The conversation at that meeting was about baseball and women's soccer being brought to Western. I know a lot of people are interested in that happening, and we continue to work on it. It is a process, it is a legislative process, so it's going to take probably several years, but it seems like people are starting to get together and focus a little bit more on that, so hopefully, we'll see some improvement, some work on that, and I think that the town will benefit very much from having both of those programs eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Joining me ahead is that we're going to have a public meeting for the SPIN program, the S-P-I-N, and it's going to be at the Knights of Columbus Building on 1301 Swan Street, and we're inviting all the people that are, that want to be there and see what it's all about, even District 3, because they supposedly want to do some sort of a project there on the capilla. So, it'll be July 13th at 10:00 a.m. at the Knights of Columbus Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Aman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. First is to acknowledge what a rockin' event the Fiesta de la Pina was. This Friday is the Wild and Scenic Film Festival at Light Hall at WNMU, and we, as a Town Council, wrote a letter, sponsored by Council Connel, to endorse the naming of the Gila River, the Wild and Scenic River. So, if you want to know more about that, if you wanted to go to that film festival. And July 13th is just going to be an action-packed day, because that's also the District Two Territorial Try to Volunteer Day. Behind the historic waterworks, we're going to be installing native pollinator plants, good for pollinators, and benches, and a table, and a walking labyrinth, but I think you could probably go to SPIN, and then come to the District Two Volunteer Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the June 11, 2019 Regular Meeting. Do I hear a motion? Council Ray, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 11, 2019.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Council Benson.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public input. I see that two people signed up, and I'd like to remind you that we have a five-minute limit on public input, and first will be Trent Bowles. Thank you. First, I have a question, Mayor.
Hi, everyone. I'm Trent Bowles. I'm a resident here from Silver City. First, I just want to thank all of you guys for your service. You know, this is a lot of time you guys spend to come out here and take care of our community, and I value that. And chief, I want to tell you that I've noticed from a guy who spends a lot of time out in business here in town, towns changed to seem to be less violent and more peaceful place than it was, probably even a couple of years ago. So, my perception is you're doing a great job, and I appreciate that. I want to talk about maybe my background a little bit, too. And Ray saluting the flag at the end of the pledge reminded me of something me and him both did when we signed that line and spent some time in the services. You know, I'm very big about personal freedom. I think this is a country that was built on freedoms, and I think when we go out of our way to either project fears on possible freedoms for other people that aren't realized or even manifesting as something that's a reality, but the last couple of years, we've talked about this. I heard nothing but a whole bunch of accusations that things would go south and the world would end. I can tell you that I was in Rio de Janeiro the weekend, the thing with Snoop Dogg. I was with Graham Hancock a month ago in Sedona. I was with Joe Rogan two weeks, or two months ago in California. Each one of these events I was at, I saw UTVs going in and out of small restaurants and shops and navigating these small towns. So, my background is, I have Smokey Joe's, I have Cactus Jets, and I also have the medical dispensary here in town. It'll be reopened in a couple of weeks. When we didn't do this UTV street bill bill last year, personally, I had acquired a spot by my grocery store to do UTV rentals, tours, cheap rentals, to try to get some of them away out of this, get people in town, penetrate our small artists and shops, and just see what we have to offer in Silver City. During this year, I've seen a lot of RVs come in town, stay at the campground, and not seen anybody entering our town, seeing our beautiful streets because our vehicles are too big for our tiny town. Moreover, a couple of other things that happened because of that. Because I spent so much time in Arizona, I actually ended up putting a factory there, and I had talked about this earlier, that, you know, some of the things about Silver City that are attracting me is it seemed like a place that was about quality life. And what I've seen is, I have to attract workers here. This is the biggest thing about getting people in caving business in Silver City, is where do you attract talented workers who are credited and operate different machines? So, since this, I put a factory in Tempe. I have another factory that I'm at the scale of, but somewhere, and again, I have to look for somewhere I can attract talent. And when I don't have a town that I feel has enough to attract people, it's sometimes easier to find talent where it's at. And that's where I kind of feel like we're bumping into a town that's not progressive enough to attract talent. And where does that be? Employers like myself. You know, I've got 15 people that work for me here in town, I have 15 people that work out of town. I'd love to put more people in town, but the reality is, where do you get the workers? Or how do you attract them in? And right now, there's businesses closing, I think the art stores are closed, there's a boulder, Wendy's are burning right next to us. So, this is a tough shape. I've seen a lot of businesses go, a lot of them come. I don't have any intention of going anywhere, but right now, I spend 30 weeks of the year outside town, so my view is, you know, pretty Southwestern in what I see, but what I truly see is, we fight progress, and what that does for us limits our ability to attract people who want to live here, people who want to repatriate here, and people who want to spend money here. So, that's why I think we struggle to gain size, like many communities outside of our area, because when we fight new things, personal freedoms, by projecting something that's not real, you know, the average age of these owners, I'm probably a young one at 45, Ray's probably more typical if he owns these vehicles. So, you know, I think that's something that's a little bit unfortunate, and at the end, it's costly to the town, costly to the citizens, and, you know, for a personal freedom town, it really looks to limit that. So, you know, I would definitely think a public vote would probably get the support of this. I mean, there's, I think, from just the people coming in here, typically, it was 2 to 1 on how many people were against it. So, you know, I would definitely encourage moving this to a public vote. I think that we're definitely at a tight split, and it comes down to the mayor again, and it's probably a rehash of last year, so I think the best thing we can do is let the citizens decide what's right for them, and then move to that. Thank you for your time. I do again appreciate everybody's time here.
Thank you very much. Next is John Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I turned it off. Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I was here before. My name is John Alvarez, and I came from South Dakota with a Polaris Ranger. And at that time, I thought they were going to have it legalized to drive a Polaris Ranger, $22,000 vehicle. I just put a motor license on it, I got it insured, it's street legal and ready to rock and roll, but it's not passed yet. And I'm praying to God, because it's a complete different ballgame for me. When I got here, my wife was still working, and I got to meet a lot of people and a lot of friends, and that helped out. My wife retired. A month later, she ended up getting cancer. She's gone through the first stage already, and now we're going to fight the second stage, and possibly up to December. I need transportation, because I can't drive a vehicle, period. I sustained a brain injury 30 years ago, and my doctor said, "You can drive a Polaris, you can drive a four-wheel drive, but you cannot drive a car." It don't make sense, because I got my license driving a vehicle. I haven't had any accidents, I got a lot. Anyway, that's, I'm pretty good on the will. Anyway, the people that have been helping me to take my wife up, and it's been like eight, nine times, we had to call 911, because I couldn't do anything. She's been to, she even took a flight up there to Las Cruces on helicopter, so they can stabilize her. We got her back. My son is a registered nurse. He helped me out with a lot, but there's still a lot of things that I don't know how to handle, and with the help of my friends in Silver City, we're getting through this. Now, there's times where I couldn't get nobody to take her. I had to drive my Polaris to the hospital, and then I drove her back home, which took three hours. She could not drive, she could not walk, so I had to take it a full road ride around my house on a, I got an acre, so I went all the way around, parked it by the door, and got her to the bathroom, got her to bed, and that took three hours. Without, and I couldn't find nobody to get her, to take her and all that, so there's times that you can't do anything. I just hope that we can pass, everybody's got a different story. This is my second story, and I just hope. Yeah, I'm looking at my clock here. I just hope that this thing can get passed, so I can legally drive my wife to the hospital and bring her home safely. I really appreciate you guys listening to my problem, and hopefully, that we can get this thing going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is reports. Mr. Marshall, do you have any reports?
No, sir.
Okay. Next is Item 10, Unfinished Business. Under unfinished business, Item A, is the approval/disapproval of Ordinance Number 1280, an ordinance amending Chapter 34, Section 34-201A, B, and C relating to aggressive begging and prohibited solicitations upon town-owned streets and public rights of way, and Chapter 10, Section 10-137, unsolicited entry onto private property prohibited, and Section 10-139, unlawful to enter upon posted premises of the town of Silver City Municipal Code. Council Benson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that the public has the right to free speech, but what they don't have the right to, and that is now addressed in the revision, and in this particular ordinance, is that they can't do it in an aggressive manner that intentionally or recklessly makes any physical contact with or touches another person in the course of solicitation or other expressive speech without the person's consent, that they cannot intentionally or recklessly cause another to reasonably fear imminent bodily harm or the commission of a criminal act upon their person or property in the course of solicitation or other expression of speech without the person's consent. It includes intimidating another without their consent for the purpose of seeking money or other valuable property, and intentionally or recklessly blocking the safe or free passage of another, whether a pedestrian, an operator of a motor vehicle, or a bicycle on a public street and rights of way. So, this is all about behavior, not about your right as an individual to solicit, to solicit for money, or to do anything like that. It's really about things where people would feel threatened, or passages blocked by these individuals. So, that's the tenor of this, but I know that Mr. Scavran wants to speak to something that he recently found that we're going to have to also delete, and I'll make an amendment for that when I move to approve this motion, because there's a section that he'll talk about in another chapter that needs to be added and deleted.
Mr. Scavran.
Yes, Mayor and Council. There, in a different project I was working on, I came across a section that was kind of buried, and it's specifically, it's Section 36-2211, and again, it's a prohibition of vending, selling, peddling, or offering for sale any commodity, except when the vending, selling, peddling, or offering is to the benefit of a charitable or nonprofit purpose. There was a case in Alamo Gordo recently that held that to be unconstitutional. It was too vague, it gave too much discretion to the Town Council as to what groups would be allowed to sell, vend, or offer. It makes a differentiation between charitable, nonprofit purposes and commercial purposes, which is not appropriate, and this provision needs to be deleted, not replaced, not modified, just deleted. The last time we looked at this was, I think, probably 2005 or '06, and the case law has evolved. So, what I suggested to Council Benson was that this particular provision is in line with the other actions that are being taken. I don't think it's significant enough to have to go back and republish and do a new NOI. I think this falls within the general area of appropriate and non-appropriate regulation of the freedom of speech. So, I'd like the this ordinance to include an amended statement saying that this particular section, which is Chapter 36, Section 36-2211, be deleted in its entirety.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that while this is going to be added in my motion, there's still a provision in here, in the ordinance as written, under, on the last page, so page 3, it says that Chapter 10, Section 139 current is deleted in its entirety, and it's replaced with Section 139 unlawful to enter upon posted premises. This doesn't, deleting this, what we just talked about, does not change this section, is my understanding, which means that if people do not want anyone to come onto their property.
Right.
They have to post a sign stating, "No peddlers allowed," or "No solicitation allowed" on their, on the border of their property. So, that is still permitted, it's just like, and that's not going to change with the deletion of the chapter that he mentioned. Am I correct?
Yes. The section that's being deleted is, it's vague, it gives too much discretion to Town Council, and it makes a distinction between commercial and non-commercial speech, and all of that has been held not to be constitutional, and there is one case in New Mexico that specifically threw out an ordinance very much like this not too long ago. And so, none of this has to do with the issue that Council Benson was mentioning. Basically, the courts have said that it's not up to the town government to decide who can enter someone else's property, it's up to, they leave that, especially for solicitation, it's not for criminal purposes, but for solicitation. It says that the property owner is the one that makes the ultimate decision on who can come on their property to solicit, or do whatever, you know, in that vein, sell, solicit, vend, proselytize, I think you mentioned. So, that's left to the individual homeowner. If you want to avoid people coming onto your property to send, to sell, then proselytize, whatever, put a sign up. And that sign will be a denial of entrance, and if the person is, if someone still goes ahead and enters after that sign, now it's an unconsented trespass. Call the police.
Okay. Anything else, Council Benson? Are you ready for your amendment?
I'm ready for the motion, and then if, and then we can, first, if it's seconded, then we can discuss.
Any questions for Council Benson, or comments?
So, when we talk quickly, if I try to, really quickly, when you put a sign that says no trespassing, that's not good enough.
No, it needs to be more defined. No trespassing, it should be enough, but it's not enough.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, I think in answer to you, Council Ray, I think it's going to be either no peddlers allowed, or no solicitation allowed. Those are the two signs that establish that you will not, that it would be, if they came on your property, that then that's, that's not consented by you.
And actually, I would suggest putting a no trespassing sign as well, because then what if they're coming on the property is not really to sell or vend, they're pretending they are, but they're actually coming to scope out your house, so that they can rob it. So, I would follow the ordinance and put the no solicitors, no solicitation, but if you wanted to also add to that, it doesn't detract from the sign, you could say no trespassing as well, but you need the other two terms.
Thank you. Council Benson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the Ordinance Number 1280, an ordinance amending Chapter 34, Section 34-201A, B, and C relating to aggressive begging and prohibited solicitations upon town-owned streets and public rights of way, and Chapter 10, Section 10-137, unsolicited entry into private property prohibited, and Section 10-139, unlawful to enter upon posted premises of the town of Silver City Municipal Code. To include the following amendments, delete Chapter 36, Section 36-2211 regarding vending and selling on public property in its entirety.
Thank you. We have a motion, and which includes an amendment. Do we have a second? Council Ray?
I can, Mayor. I'll second that as a matter of fact.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Any discussion? This is a roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Besen?
Aye.
Councilor Ammons Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item under new business is the approval/disapproval of a public celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978-60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for the Second Annual Silver City Wine Festival to be held at Gulf Park on July 13 through 14, 2019. Sponsor: New Mexico Wine. Licenseholder information: License Number 60029. Owner Name: Precep Wine LLC, DBA Gruet Winery, 5400 Pan American Freeway, Northeast Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87113. I think Mr. Dave Grohl will present his request.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. I'm Dave Grohl, co-owner of La Esperanza Winery with my wife Esperanza, and I'm representing Mr. Chris Gruet, who is our executive director for New Mexico Wines. He was here in front of you last April, I believe, April 8th, and we at that time, thanks to you, pulled 12 different PCPs. One has, for many reasons, has had to drop out, and so the replacement for that particular winery is Precep Wine LLC. A little bit about Precep. Precep is our largest winery in the state of New Mexico. In relationship, us down in Mimbres, we only do about 1,000 cases of wine a year. They do over 200,000 cases of wine. Precep is also the largest privately owned wine entity in the northwest. They're in about five different states. They're hooked up now doing business with Gruet, and I think all you know about Gruet, international award-winning type sparkling wine, can't say the other word. And in addition, my daughter works for Gruet. She is now third or fourth in command with Gruet. She has come up the ranks, and she also runs a testing lab for all the wineries in New Mexico. So, with your permission, I respectfully request that we approve the PCP. And let me just give you an update. I'm really thrilled in working with the town manager, the town clerk, in organizing this event, helping the two entities. Everything's going great. In fact, tomorrow we'll be getting the banners and talking to the fire chief. He recommended highly the size of the banner and where we should put them, and he recommended on the archway, coming in, a two-foot by 20-foot, double-sided banner. And after, of course, the Fourth of July events, he's recommended we put it on top of the gazebo at Gulf Park. So, all of the arrangers are coming together, all the vendors are being signed up, all the wineries are getting signed up. It's just going to be a wonderful event that we're going to have here in Silver City. Another event on July 13th. That will be a third event. But they can also go on the 14th to the wine fest. So, I think it's going to be a great, great weekend on the, Mayor and Council, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Grohl. Any questions? Comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the general public? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a notice of celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978-60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for the Second Annual Silver City Wine Festival to be held at Gulf Park on July 13 through 14, 2019. Sponsor: New Mexico Wine. Licenseholder information: License Number 60029. Owner Name: Precep Wine LLC. Doing business as Gruet Winery, 5400 Pan American Freeway, Northeast Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87113.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, second the motion is stated.
Councilor Besen? You had your light on, Councilor Ray. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item is 11B, the approval/disapproval of notice of intent, ordinance number 1282, and ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 2, smoking in public places of the municipal code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. Councilor Ammons Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this, first, I want to take this back a little bit into time, and to let the public and the general listeners on the TV know that back in 2001, Silver City was one of the first municipalities in New Mexico to pass ordinance and ordinance about not smoking in enclosed public places. The state of New Mexico didn't pass similar ordinance until many, many years later. During the time that's passed, having lit tobacco weed is not the only way that people enjoy nicotine and other substances. And this past legislative session, our New Mexico State Legislature passed a bill which included language about vaping and e-cigarettes and included cannabis as being something that they did not want people to be smoking in enclosed public places. That bill was signed by the governor on April 2nd, and just literally three weeks later, one of our Department of Health outreach folks, Michelle DC, who's sitting back there beaming me emotional support, contacted me and said, "What about we fold this updated language into our ordinance here?" I've been working with our attorney, Robert Scavran, since then, and what we have in front of you is a notice of intent, which means that if it's passed by the council, it's an opportunity for further research, further analysis, further honing of this ordinance. And what it does is it essentially does fold in the language from the state statute that is appropriate and applies to us as a town. So, it would continue to prohibit any kind of smoking, vaping of any kind of a product inside of publicly accessible buildings. So, that would include most small businesses. It would include all schools, daycare centers, including private homes that service daycare facilities for young people or for adult care. So, there's a variety of things that the state statute included that really isn't appropriate, and so we didn't include it here. So, we're not having a language saying that we're going to not expel in the state capital. Doesn't make sense here. But the other language that lays out where you can smoke or vape, which means inhale or not inhale a vaporized liquid substance, including anything that has tobacco or any kind of flavoring or any kind of smell or cannabis in a public facility, that is all included. So, the information that was used to craft this NOI really came from the state statute. And there are a couple of things that are particular to our town that we have included. Back in 2001, it was included that the community park, Penny Park, would be a place in which no smoking would be allowed. And that was because of the great deal of research that indicated secondhand smoke had a really bad effect on children and indeed on adults. The ordinance also reaffirms that the town manager has the authority upon his discretion and his research and analysis to ban smoking in any other public park or open space as he deems appropriate. So, that's a reaffirmation that is put out there so that for greater public information, you will know what is allowed and what's not allowed in terms of smoking or vaping here in the town. So, that's the background. I think I did that in three minutes or less. I'm hoping. All right. So--
Any questions, Councilor Besen? Councilor Connaught?
Actually, four of mine. I love this. I definitely support it, but Section 22-23 subsection 12, which is the one you were just talking about, where it says that any park, trail, open space, or town, or the town which has been designated or ordered by the town manager. I would like to see that removed. I think it should just be any park, trail, open space in the town should be a smoke-free area. I don't think there should be a, yeah, you can do it at this park, but you can't do it with that one. My other concern is that we don't necessarily always, aren't going to have a town manager who is okay with not smoking. Maybe that's someone who loves to smoke and decides they want to be able to smoke, and so they decide that later on. I think if we're going to do this, we should just do it and be done with it, because there are plenty of parks where adults hang out where they don't want to have to be smug with smoking. There's not just so many.
When we have a motion, then you can make an amendment proposal, okay?
Yeah. A third amendment would be welcome.
Do I?
Way better.
Any other question?
I think Councilor Ray's looking at what he wants to ask.
Councilor Besen?
At first, I wanted to state that I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Connaught, because I know that I've attended events at Gulf Park, and I have people saying, "Can we, can we make this a designated space where people can't smoke?" Because I'm out here breathing the fresh air, and I don't necessarily want to breathe secondhand smoke. So, I completely agree with that. The other question I have is Section 22-25, where it says reasonable distance to find. I thought that the original state statute stated that it had to be no closer, that smoking could not occur closer than 20 feet to any open window or door of a building.
I thought it was 50.
I think it's 20. And at the university, I think we do it in 25. So, that means that, for instance, let's take an example, if you are in an outdoor space that is surrounded by a building, you know, the building is around it, you can't smoke in that outdoor space because you're too close to an open window or door. And that would then subject folks in the facility or the building to secondhand smoke, even if they're not, they're near an open window, but it could be on the backside of the building or something like that, the window is open. So, I just, clarification, is I thought that that's what it said for, in the original state statute, was 20 feet.
I didn't see anything about 20 feet in the amendments. The recent amendments that were signed, I didn't see any distance. What it talked about was where it looked as to the effect, where there, if any smoke infiltrates through ventilation, through doorway, through passageway, that's wrong, whether it's 20 feet or 30 or 40 feet. So, it has to do with the effect of the smoke. If it infiltrates a smoke-free area, it's wrong. It can't be done. Now, an individual business has the power to designate its entire business and the area of the business, like a patio, as a non-smoking area, whether it would infiltrate the building or not. Nothing in this ordinance takes away the power, authority of a property owner to declare the entire property as a smoke-free area.
I would say that, I'm now thinking that maybe that was something that after Silver City had done the ordinance, that was something that Western New Mexico University had done. And they had taken it a step further and made sure that it was not within 20 feet of a door or window.
And some, I mean, I think Bisbee, we were at Bisbee recently, and they had assigned one business saying it was a restaurant, no smoking within 15 feet. So, yeah, but we're looking at more the effect, because 16 feet of smoke can still infiltrate. So, the legislature apparently is looking at the infiltration of smoke, and that you shouldn't have to walk through a smoking area to get to a non-smoking area. And one other comment, if you decide, the way of dealing with the suggestion of Councilor Connaught would be rather than getting rid of various sections, just on number 12, that's Section 22-2312, right now, this is where smoking is prohibited. It says any park, trail, open space of the town, which, and I would suggest just deleting all the language following it, which has been designated and ordered by the town manager to be a smoke-free area. Just having any park, trail, or open space of the town accomplishes what she wants to do.
Do I hear a motion to, for that change?
Uh, yes.
Do I hear a motion on the ordinance, on the NOI first?
Yes. Let me do that, please. Thank you, sir. So, I move to approve, when I get it out, so that I can see here, then I can view. I move to approve notice of intent of ordinance number 1282 by an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 2, smoking in public places of the municipal code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, with the following amendments. When I make it in the back, Section 22, that's 2311--
And you're going to eliminate the language following the word "town."
So, eliminate the language following the word "town," so that 22-3, any park, trail, open space of the town.
Does all the council members understand them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
We have a motion and an amendment, which includes an amendment. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor? A second amendment, that's stated and amended.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment?
Actually, I have a little further discussion and comment, and that is that our town attorney and I went round and round about a direct distance. That was something that I already wondered about, too. And our chapter and the state amended legislation did not help that. But I'm very familiar with a variety of organizations, like hospitals, that have assigned that say no smoking within 20 feet. So, remember, the NOI research is open for more research, analysis, and comment, so I'm not interested in appropriate kinds of changes.
Any other comments? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is 11C, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 1219-18, a resolution to participate in local government road fund program administered by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is the, pretty much the annual resolution that you see regarding the fog seal and chip seal. And the locations are delineated in the resolution as well as the attachment that you had in your packet. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from Mr. Marshall? Do I hear a motion?
Actually, I have a comment. I just wanted to say that the very first phone call I got when I was elected was from a woman who lived on Paul Place, who told me that it had been 30 years that she had been waiting for this hack, and so I know that the people that live in this area are going to be very, very thankful.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, I would move to approve of Resolution Number 2019-18, a resolution to participate in local government road fund program administered by New Mexico Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Ray?
And, Mayor, I'll second it, Mr. Smith.
A motion and second. Is there any comment or discussion in the council? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Ammons Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Metz?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is 11D, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-19, a resolution supporting the Town of Silver City's participation in a capital outlay program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation for road improvements to include rights of way in Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico. Mr. Marshall?
Mayor and Council, I think you're well aware that Little Ol' Road has been the plans for the town for many, many years, and-- the plans for the town for many, many years, and this is a Department of Transportation 100% at $275,000 with the town to pay anything in excess of that, and will be acquiring rights of way. Most of the engineering has been done, the right-of-way that needs to be acquired has been identified, and would like to proceed.
Any questions or comments? Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I believe that this was legislatively appropriated this during the 2019 legislative session, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, this is your tax dollars that go to the state coming back to us.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
Let's go with ourselves.
Councilwoman Edison and I are fully informed here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Aiman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 2019 dash 19, a resolution supporting the town of Silver City's participation in the capital outlet program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation for road improvements to include rights of way in Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I expect that the motion is stated.
You have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion among the council?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add that, so, and Council Condon, which is one of the first bits of information that happened when I was elected was how much we needed to do work out of Little Wallna Road, and so I'm delighted that the state legislature has appropriated these plans.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Council Edison?
I just want to thank town staff and every one of the, of those of us on the, on the town council for, you know, supporting this allocation kept out there. I think this was really important, and it's just, like I said, it's another way for us to get the state tax dollars that everybody pays to come back to our community for road improvements and other things that we need. So, thank you to the staff, if you would, Mr. Marshall.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Council Edison?
Aye.
Councilwoman Aiman Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11E, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2019 dash 20, a resolution supporting the town of Silver City's participation in a capital outlay program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation for sidewalks in Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico. Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is another legislative allocation for 2019 for $300,000 with a 0% match, and the town to pay anything in excess of 300,000. However, this will be tagged into the 2018 legislative allocation for $125,000, giving us 425, all the engineers' estimate was 408,000, and it'll be for sidewalks on Market Yankee off of Board.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Marshall? Do I hear a motion? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of resolution number 2019 dash 20, a resolution supporting the town of Silver City's participation in the capital outlet program administered by the municipal Department of Transportation for sidewalks in Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico.
Do I hear a motion, there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Condon?
I'll second that. Motion is stated.
Motion and second. Any comment or discussion in the council? Council Edison?
I just want to thank staff again for moving this forward and getting the funding, and the fact that we can combine those forces that complete the task. So, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Council Condon?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Councilwoman Aiman Smith?
Aye.
Council Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is 11F, the appointment to the Municipal Museum Community Advisory Group. We received an application from Harold Henry Gregory, and he was recommended for appointment by the interim museum director and by the vice president of the museum advisory group. If there are no objections, I would like to appoint him to the advisory group.
Do you want to?
He is hereby appointed. This leaves us with one vacancy on this particular group. I'd encourage community members to look at the requirements, and if you're interested, pick up an application in the town clerk's office.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Edison?
I just want to note that I think that it needs to be a resident of the town Silver City, because all of the external appointments have been made.
Okay, thank you. This concludes business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Council Ray?
Before I make a motion, I want to make a statement that I should be, that should be corrected. Last town council meeting, I mentioned that we were the only municipality that didn't allow a side-by-side. I was wrong in saying that. What I meant to say is that all the municipalities that are allowed it, that we want to a town council, we're the only ones that have, that hasn't done it. All the rest of them that they have found, that were presented to them, have allowed it. We have, we have ruled it down. So, I hope it's correct, but, but I wanted to say. Anyway, I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Councilwoman Aiman Smith?
I'm second.
For the motion and second and a discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're hereby adjourned.